I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go Paul.
Percy.
Here.
Snyder.
Here.
Bartella.
Here.
Trup.
Here.
Ister.
Any specific audience comment on anything that's on the agenda right now? Unfinished business. Remember the last meeting I said we're gonna do this up, but the first thing on is ammunition. What we'd like to do tonight is not harm to borough again, it's just made an offer to take all this old harmless and I can read it to you, I don't really understand what it is, the chief will, we talked about it in the last time. The stuff that we're never gonna use is pretty much from the SWAT team, they have a SWAT team, that's the issue. So what I would do is make a motion that we, as council approve, to get rid of this. And on your Michael review, make sure everything is done to property. So I make that form of motion.
I'll second that, did you discuss something about liability then?
There's a whole harmless agreement that they sent us that I had forwarded to Terry, so we're...
Yeah, do you guys have a copy of that somewhere? I saw on Michael to make sure that everything we're not missing. Any other questions?
Snyder.
Yes.
Bartella. Trup.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
All right. Outdoor Burning, we had a meeting here last Tuesday, Wednesday it was, thirty-eight people showed up, nice turnout. We pretty much put the pros and cons down, everybody had different aspects of their views. I know Jerome and Dale spent a lot of time putting a lot of paperwork together, so we clearly have a lot of stuff to look at. I'm not prepared, I don't think councils either like to come up with anything, but we could, again, we did address everybody's concern, so I would suggest that we, whatever changes we're gonna make, if we make any, we do it at the next meeting. Hopefully everybody has a chance to look, unless you guys had a chance to look at Jerome's stuff. They had a whole pile of stuff, so no objection, we'll just keep that on the agenda for the next meeting. New business, sale of the 2005 police interceptor. That was advertised as a 2005 Ford police. They will open up the bids and decide if you want to award it or whatever else we want to do with it. So, we have one bid from... From Grace Call to Use Cars in Morrisville, Pennsylvania, $1,004. From... That is a bid, okay. Private person, Wicker, Pennsylvania, let's see what's the guy's name, Chris Savage, $1,220. A bid from... Carl Ashley, something port, Smithport, Smithport, Pennsylvania, $1,100. Bay Ridge Motors. Staten Island, New York, $555. The other reserve was a thousand. There's no one in there, that's why I put $55, he even hasn't written that in the bottom.
Don't forget they might do it back.
I could be, I could be, yes. Thank God that man, George Cole looks like, $2,800. Where's your pump was?
Danville.
Chief, is that car stripped? Man, all the communications, you...
Yes.
Everything's out of it, everything's off, push bar's off, cage, everything's out of it. We have a seat to replace the prisoner seat back, prisoner seat. Purpose was for us to make money for the first time this year, if we work, we got the cash.
Actually we have a bid here from Chicago, Illinois, $1,581.
Is everything working, Chief?
Asia Motors.
Air conditioning there?
Home of used police cars, in case you guys wouldn't know where that was. It's in Chicago, Illinois.
Do the radios in your cars work? Cars you have now.
I'm sorry?
Do the radios work in your cars?
Yes. The discussion is if we, if we wanna actually get rid of this or consider giving it the code enforcement. But $2,800 is a pretty good one.
Does air conditioning work?
Absolutely.
Does it work in your car?
No.
No?
Neither one.
I think Kevin should go out with the car over and save...
Twenty dollars is a good pressure, aren't we?
Yes, it is.
I just wanna prove we can do it, make money, so...
We'll find out on the term itself, aren't we, that's my opinion.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to accept this official looking bid here, scribbled on this piece of paper, for $2,800. I don't think George Cole. And now here we have... Anyway, for the...
Is it George Cole, 271, 1818, is that the phone number?
Yes.
If she actually showed up, having cranked the engine over and checked her...
All right. So I make a motion to accept the $2,800, I need a second.
Bartella.
Yes.
Trup.
Yes.
Ister. Percy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Okay, we have the same situation, a new business bid for sale of police weapons. Everybody has a copy of this? No, I have them all, sorry about that. What we wanna do is, again, this will all be approved, you know, we run it by Mike to make sure that everything is... I'm not worried about the advertising, we have no problem with that, it's for the sale, whoever gets it, if, you know, some of the guys talked about buying their own, if the guys go together, put a bid in, I don't care who puts a bid in, we just need to make sure that everything is done legally, you know, what agreements you have to do, we just can't go sell guns to anybody we wanna sell to. So right now, all we're making a motion is that we, this is a list of weapons and ammunition that we wanna bid, and I'm just asking for permission to put them out for bid right now. So that's in form of a motion.
The quote we have on here, dollar wise, is that the minimum bid?
Yeah, that'd be reserve.
Is that reserve value?
Yep.
If I could...
Yes, sir.
The bid for the guns themselves is something we've been told last year. If you wanna explore options for other stuff, the ammunition, the rest of it is all stuff that I took off of our prices. So that's, most of that is what we paid similar to last year. If you can find someone who'll give us more, but I don't mean...
Well, and the goal is, we do have a line up of $4,500 I need to fill, so hopefully I'm waiting for $4,500 of it.
I presume we have to clarify on the advertisement as well, that it's not just open to the general public?
The one criteria idea the mayor was that the weapons would have to go through a federal firearms license dealer, and if at all possible, there should be somebody writing that, false if we find, we accept no responsibility, no liability once. Everything's gone, it's no longer just some very city's issue, if they do something else with the gun, ship them off to a brand or whatever it's about, or we ship them.
If you sell them through a firearm dealer, they do the backlash, that should be their baby after they happen then, right?
Now that's...
We open it up, it's more public.
Gotta let your bid on...
We can never give you more bids, right?
Just make sure your mic says we're not selling Russian... Yes.
Just, reserves on the number one for the locks, we shouldn't be having a reserve on everything then, or you just come out with a pistol.
Well, the lineup is based on the pistol, the other stuff is just what's been accumulated, what we have sitting around there, so I don't know, I don't think we need anything else on anything else, just a... Yeah.
Well, you know what that comes, that, it's the 308 which is, I mean, you want that reserve to be at 526, don't you? You don't wanna set that for us to be at 200 bucks, do you?
That's one of the top of the line, all the emissions, top of the line, recent emissions.
Absolutely. You're gonna put it out there, you wanna get at least that for that, the value is on it, because...
And actually, with ammunition issues today, that should not be hard to sell.
But we can change all these, it says value that, total estimated value, just make them all reserve value then, if you wanna do that, right? Because that's what we have for the guns.
Creating your estimated value, is that off of your purchase price or is that actually off of today's market space?
That was purchased twice last...
Today's market value's gotta be a lot higher, so I don't think it's, except for saying, reserve that at that price.
If you try one initially, we try and find missions of...
We'll put, all these figures that are in here, we will make a, we'll call them reserve value, and yeah.
Then you'll bring in...
Then that's the minimum that we can get there anyway. All right, that's a motion, you second?
Trup.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bartella.
Yes.
Are we gonna advertise that right?
Yeah. No, it was advertised, just like we advertised everything else, I'm not aware that we have any, I mean, we probably put it in, I don't know what we put in, special?
You could, uh...
Police?
There's, there's a PHE's website, there's a place, PHE's website, which will cover the fire state.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, it'd be just like a regular advertisement, I'd like to make extra stuff, we would deal with probably some stuff. Okay, Wetlands area, Jim?
Yes, Sarah, a few years ago, up here on North Sixth Street, toward downtown, old John Collins. And it sits along to the Wetlands. The Wetlands group has, friends and us, asked them if they would take, lead the city, donate those parcels to the Wetlands group. They wanna take, take that area and redesign it and open it up for, they're trying to get back school. School kids and so forth that come up there, I know Sispan, maybe talking to all kids, students come up there, working on the Wetlands. If you guys can down there, everybody can see the parcel, we're looking at. Here's a copy of the deeds, parcels, tore down here.
I thought we started from the front.
So Wetlands group, up there, Joe, you'll see the three in orange, that was the parcel that tore down. And it's not a building site anymore. Anyone take it, a railroad that, you see it runs along there, then it like down, and actually put some seating...
This is where labor and industry, or...
Yes. Back, this way, I can't see.
Yeah, that's, that's Ray Street, building on Bay Street, yes, so this is...
Right before the old overpasses, do you guys?
Between the underpass and Bay.
Toward Market Street.
I know where you're going.
Big rock bodies, maybe over our tracks.
I think that ride is still standing.
That ride?
Yes, that ride is still there.
Was that a nonprofit, is what it is?
It's like quick on the hours.
What was the plan when you, when they originally bought it?
Put a science center in.
Art?
They put a science center in.
Yes, that was discussed.
Yes.
That's up here in Hill, along the bank, the side of the...
No, it was over that other section, one town there, ones around the corner, and then that didn't work out. So the fact of Wetlands, nature, having students visit the sites. Any other questions?
Does that curb walkway goes through from Market to back school, that doesn't continue through the Wetlands?
No, that stops right on the other side of the race.
So good.
A rider car that can ride out of the back school, right down the walkway, across the race, later to the Wetlands.
And it's not across to the bike?
And they wanna bring, follow the trail, the railroad dead, and then at the railroad dead, is where they wanna take and rebuild that. Exactly.
This is gonna take place...
This is the first step before they do any design work, because they wanna say, get those parcels before they design, design.
Is there something we can put in the motion that two years down the road, nobody does it, then it'll get over?
I think it has to be in there, I think that makes implications, they don't use it with their work protocol, they can't sell it or do anything else with it. That's my back to the city's...
Yeah, put the restriction on it.
That's what it's designated for, science center.
The... It came sold off, of course. Right. And it has to be used for Wetlands projects.
I lived there, I lived in that house, one of the houses that was torn down.
Oh, I thought you were with the committee with the Wetlands?
No, I just thought, no, that was the science, supposedly, they're supposed to go in there, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so, do we have a motion, or in the form of a motion? Yes. We'll add the restrictions.
Can I have a review of Mike?
Yes. Right. Do I have a second?
One second. Ister.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bartella.
Yes.
Trup.
Yes.
Hard meeting day changed, Joe?
I know they came to us last Monday, and asked if they could change the hard meeting, so we would have everything presented to us by first meeting of the month, I can change to the first Wednesday of the week.
I'm assuming that this is what the committee's recommending, right?
Yes, there's lots of private, private attention.
Right, Mike, everybody supported that?
I, 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 I think that usually goes in meetings.
Yeah, we supported it. Nobody told me that was a meeting.
Yeah, we supported it then.
She said, she told you, Kevin, that you go for it.
No, we had a meeting upstairs.
Because it's a council minute, it's supposed to be there.
We had a meeting here Monday night for the board of super niggas, we give us a new year at that meeting too?
I didn't know when, I didn't know when the hard meeting was, nobody told me.
You've been a council for three years, you don't know what's...
They don't always have, they don't always have, you can notify them.
Well, I talked to Mr. Snyder, told him I wasn't gonna be present because of the, sorry, the hard meeting.
So you both present, and then it's what we...
They, they tell me, right?
Well, right now they're making it the first Wednesday of the month.
Because I can't, you know, you changed the locks on my door, and everything came, get in my office, and I had to check my mail, I can't do anything, so...
Where's your computer, if you got a computer, that's how you can go, right?
I don't even have a computer.
So you left a box out there, so you all...
I gave it, I gave it to him.
All right, we get off course here, guys, that's, do we want to vote on this, or are you telling us we're just gonna do it, or? They wanna do it, I guess, let's, let's take a vote.
I think a motion...
Is there a recommendation or something from the hard...
Yeah, block Snyder.
It's not incorrect.
Well, we voted, the five of us that was there, we all voted for it. That's, that's what I was trying to get to, thank you very much, council.
Whether or not you ask for it, that's the key.
All right. So that's what they want. The architect had a conflict before the third Wednesday. All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the change of the hard meeting to the first Wednesday of the month, per the recommendation of the hard...
Well, sir. Percy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bartella.
Yes.
Trup.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
You support Street parking lots, Jim? Street parking lot?
Yes, the Elks, going to have an event on August 17, 2013. Required time, 3:00 PM till closing. It's an annual event behind the Elks over here, it's a fundraiser block party. They have the insurance policy and so forth and so forth. Is this correct, everything you had to that?
It would definitely be over by them, yeah. Three o'clock, just basically, so we start setting up, I know it's the same day as River Festival. We just want a little portion of the parking lot at 3:07 to 8:00. And we don't, can start a talk of River Festival, it's over at 6:00.
It's every year, right, so?
That's happening every year.
Yeah, yeah, we have a function every year, it's one of our major fundraisers. And right, right now we're in a capital campaign, so there's a lot of people for this.
Any questions? Not on the motion?
One second.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bartella.
Yes.
Trup.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Alcohol waiver Elks?
Same situation that evening, same time, August 17, 3:00 PM till 11:00. Want a waiver to allow alcohol to be stolen in that same area, you know, designated area, it's not just open, walking around with a chain, correct, sir?
Yes, we fence in the whole area, and we do have security personnel, people walk around, we guard everyone. This is our first year we've done this, you know, we've tried, uh, talking, but we've never had any issues at all, never. And, you know, we serve only beer, no hard liquor at all, and, you know, the last lot was, you know, we use cups or cans. And it's coordinated in our, that's an area, so the can blocks out the area, and we keep all the access to the other can.
Is that motion due?
Yes.
Bartella.
Yes.
Trup.
Yes.
Ister. Percy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Through the pay invoices, vouchers, Todd?
Uh, yes, tonight, there's an amount that's a little bit larger than normal, only because of the payments towards our tax anticipation note. Also, there's health insurance payment in there, make note, there's some large payables as a result of Overstreet project. So as a result, we're making requests this evening, they are outstanding invoices in the amount of $325,721.11 for the general fund, and also $377.82 for Harvard Fuel's account.
Trup.
Yes.
Ister. Percy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bartella.
Yes.
I wanna move up, because this one thing under discussion is very important, I wanna move that up first, before discussion. That's the Keystone's Community Grant Program, Megan. Who got this floor?
As you received earlier, a resolution that we asked if we might be able to pass that in support of the Keystone community designation. We have to have proof of fund, part of that is a fundraising request, and that is just a commitment, however, is of course under review yearly as per your budget, and we understand we can't designate funds, you know, beyond the current year. But that funding, and also the resolution is needed in order to submit for this, for the Keystone designation. The designation gives a priority for many grants for DCED that will enable to apply for them in the city. Was the resolution with the email? No, it was not, I'm sorry, but it was submitted on the past two days.
Yeah, we had it last meeting.
Okay, I did have it probably. Yeah, just to refresh the members.
We've all pretty well talked to various, you and I, whether with the budget, and the job descriptions are in here. Well, I think we all recognize how important it is, I'm just not sure the best way to go about it, you wanna talk about it, Todd?
Yeah, I guess, there were two things that felt were important, to kind of make sure that we were on the same page with this. One is recognizing the importance of SRI's mission to the city. There's no doubt, I think everyone at this table will be strongly in that mission, what it's trying to accomplish. Proper and adequate staffing of the organization to ensure that it can meet those objectives and do all the necessary work is critical. But with that said, we're shifting from a publicly funded, not-for-profit, in this instance, to now a little bit more of a heavily funded, city budget line item to support that organization's mission. So with that in mind, council, because we're expending taxpayer money now in larger quantities towards it, or we're at least looking to talk about, setting aside larger monies to support it. I think has to in some way ensure that we have some more direct involvement in the organization at a leadership level, so that those dollars can be properly accounted for, at the same time, that we can work collaboratively to ensure that those roles and responsibilities for those new personnel meet the mission, help us drive in the revenue necessary to cover those costs, and have some say in the performance criteria for measuring the success of those positions, in order to keep year after year justifying them in the budget. So the conversations that I think have to be had yet around those points, beyond the concept, that those two more operational kind of issues, I think, can be had over the next few months, going into the budget cycle. You know, we can talk about that. So I would just look at supporting it, put out on the table for discussion, you know, those, those points, because I think it's gonna be a real difficult call for us to justify the investment without putting some of those sorts of stipulations into it, just to ensure, you know, the taxpayers obviously are getting their, are getting their value. But otherwise, I'm all for the idea of certainly continuing to help support it for more than years, and making this work, and talk through those points.
Todd, I think you did an excellent job explaining things, only I would wanna add is, I think we should get a monthly financial report like other parties have to do, so, so the taxpayer mind will know on a monthly basis where your money's going. And if you feel it, it's expenditure, we don't, if it's justifiable, if you have a question.
Great.
I agree with you, Sam, now, we have our base taxes on this for four years, and $84,000 is another half a mill tax. And I just wanted to say, if it comes down to the end of the year, and we're looking at balancing the budget, I think this is one of the first things that's gonna come out, and we do need to have a say how this is going to operate down there in that SRI. Because this is a chunk of change coming out of the taxpayer's pocket now.
We'd be glad to have representation in the city on the board, I mean, right now, the chief is on our board, but we've got someone else in our council that would be very welcome, we hope to have greater collaboration. And additionally, our, we'll be for more sources of revenue, we do have an event named Asol, a Hawaiian beer festival, which will hopefully come to revenue stream, which will decrease our reliance on that funding to the city. That this designation requires us to show that we can cover this person in the next five years, and those that contract record on that activity, we can prove.
I mean, it's, it's really hard to jumpstart a mission like they have, you're really looking to reinvent your organization here. And give it a new flavor, and at the same time, everything that they do will have dividends down the road. We don't make that capital investment now to kind of help them fulfill their plan. No one will. And it's kind of on us, I think, to make that investment upfront, and if we have to bite the bullet a little bit this year in order to at least give them a shot at it, fantastic.
I agree, Todd.
But we don't really have a community development personnel either, I mean, that's a position in the city that we don't even have. I mean, this is the most, the most close thing we have to a community development organization, I think we should support them, no matter what.
The task SRI, they, I don't wanna say they struggled, but they just like went through motions, and if you notice, lately, we have done a lot, done a lot of great strides, and even with River Festival, the last two years, you've noticed that there has been a change, you know, like this year we're bringing American items in, you know, we've never done like that, it's all, you know, that's gonna draw a lot of people, you know, so we're looking at employing more items, and we're thinking to grow more people into the city of summer. It's just a matter of, you know, we also have to have this person to kind of grant, and to help us do all these other things, so... It's a huge undertaking to the city, but honestly, we also believe in you, so, I mean, a big good thing, we can work together to do this.
With that Riverfront that we just finished, that's a great opportunity there, it's a good opportunity there to, you know, thrive on, so...
But, I mean, this is something we need, especially with Riverfront.
I think, Megan, the group that you have put together now, if you wanna, like you said, a lot of things, and the possibilities are just endless in the Riverfront, on the function and so forth, I think your wine festival, long-term, will be very successful. Zach said this morning, thinking about something in the spring, when it's cooler, and fall, and going to summer months. It's gonna be very popular down there.
A lot of these spots, people, they're posting, and it's just, I don't know, it's so positive, everybody's excited about it, everybody's pumped to the best we've held there, and it's nice to see that excitement.
The young man, the young man that I brought in for the cameras, and we met today. I took him down. He was never on that side. I showed him what, you know, the docks is in the theater and all the possibilities. He also said that some of the cameras positioned in proper direction. People get online in the mornings, see how much activity is going on, watch the events online. And then he made a suggestion about the one E D camera. I guess it's a pamper ammo or something.
And a camera.
Camera, and then we're going to be mounting one of those on the gazebo, so we'll have the whole river on your screen. All the activities and, uh, whatever, whatever on the river. But, uh, I think long-term, it's going to be very positive.
Well, one of the things that I've, I've heard was about people, if there was ever going to be permanent, both jobs out of the rent. Because it was waiting less long with the places, like the way that social club. One of the questions that, that they've asked me numerous times, and I was going to tell you this, we don't know if we're ever going to have permanent jobs or rent.
We had numerous phone calls to last year for this season. Problem is, it always stays off. Okay? And twenty-five boats pull up, and we have, you know, the spots already rented. We defeated our purpose. Can't knock up to get off. They're coming to the wine festival, whatever, whatever. So we've been holding off. Revenue, we like the revenue, but by the same token, that isn't what it was designed for, designed for. Pulling up, getting on shore, enjoying whatever's going on. I know last year, the owner of the Top House told me that he had people at the dock here, up where they set a steps out of church, went to Top House for dinner.
We got opportunities here, but more than that, right, Jim?
Oh, yeah.
That's what they were saying. I don't want to defeat that purpose, but...
I just think next year, because all the planning's going on this year, next year it's just going to be a choice.
But to your point, you know, I think we're at a pivotal point in that we've got a good team here overall, especially going forward, kind of being placed to be able to work collectively with you. You've got a new teaching plan. And if we're ever going to be aggressive about making change, it's going to be in the next twenty-four, thirty-six months of taking that time to work together, get the business plan sorted out. And, you know, you can, unfortunately, what happens sometimes when you get, when you go on something like this, is you get so many different ideas. You become major distractions, where you take all your energy, you push it in a thousand different places. The hardest part is actually coming to terms as a group with those two or three things that you could really move forward on, hang your hat on, and put all your time and energy into to get done right, get done well, so that you really can see the return on that investment quickly to help pay for that position in years two, three, four. So we can easily get distracted, is my point, with all the great opportunities. But it's a matter of how do we together put our hands around just those two or three to improve it. And once we've already approved a success with it. So for me, I don't think that's going to be a problem. That's why I'm more than happy to support getting together and getting this position funded. At least working as hard as we can to make it work.
So I make a motion, we proceed, before we...
Okay, this is under the first part of resolution. Send December, authorizing December S R I to file a proposal for Keystone Community Designation with the Department of Community and Economic Development, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Make a motion?
Second.
Ayster?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time and effort in that. And, uh, you know, we'll, we'll...